All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Florence regular meeting Tuesday, September 16th. I have number one roll call, please.
Mayor Eaton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam? Councilmember Neal is on his way, but he's going to be a little late. Councilmember Cholada?
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Bessina?
Here.
Councilmember Bedford is online. Do you hear us, Councilmember Bedford?
Yes.
We have a call.
All right. Thank you so much. Before we get to item number three and four, just want to read a brief statement concerning some events of this week. So over the last week, we witnessed more tragic events in our country. The death of Charlie Kirk in Utah, where he's close to home as an elected official, as well as a person that is concerned with our First Amendment rights. A right that I hold very dear, and I know the rest of us do too. Whether you're Republican, Democrat, man woman, black, white, red, yellow, gay or straight, these rights guarantee every individual the right for free speech, freedom of the press, peaceful assembly, and the right to petition our government. We must remember that these rights are vital for a healthy, vibrant community where ideas can be shared openly and voices can be heard. As your mayor, I'm dedicated to ensuring that our town remains a place where free and respectful expression is protected and respected by all of our residents. Let us work together to foster an environment of respect, open dialogue, and unwavering commitment to our constitutional rights. Only through safeguarding these freedoms can we continue to thrive in a free and open society, the ideals that so many have fought for us to enjoy. Thank you for that. So with that, a moment of silence to it. I'd like to, when we do our moment of silence, keep our neighbors to the east. Timber Mesa Fire Department lost two firefighters in a horrific wreck on the 260 this last weekend, and I just would like you to keep them in your thoughts and prayers during our moment of silence. Item number five is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter is put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have one that has signed up to talk tonight, Ms. Donna Rankin. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
And welcome. I'm not a very good speaker, but I'm gonna try my best, because I left the other speaker at home. Anyways, I'm here to represent Florence K-6. Hard for me to remember, because it's been K-8 forever, but on the 31st, we are having our 12th annual trunk or treat. In the past, this is, I started it whenever, 12 years ago. In the past, the Town of Florence has always stepped up. Our police department has given me the road closures and, you know, security and things like that. Our fire department, when they can and not out on a call, they come and distribute the candy to the kids. Parks and Rec. I know that it's a big night for you guys also, but I have to, first of all, tell you thank you for the past support that we've really gotten from our town. It will be on October the 31st, which is Halloween, from 9:30 to 10:30. You can come and set up on Orlando Street, 8:30. We like for people to decorate if they want. They can decorate themselves, their cars, whatever. They can give out pencils, they can give out candy. We have approximately 650 kids this year. That is from our pre-K through our sixth grade, which I'm kind of excited about, because we've always pretty much stopped at third grade. So now we're including our sixth graders. We have a theme truck, or trunk. The theme is your theme. It lasts about an hour. Is there any questions? I told you I'm not a very good speaker.
You've done an excellent job. You gave us all the information. Is there any other, anything else? So we don't really ask any questions on this, but thank you so much. And can you make sure that you get that information to Jeff and our folks, so we can make sure and disseminate it?
To whom?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, for anybody who's thinking about doing it, you're probably going to have your costume for that night anyway, and you really need to go, because the kids are adorable and they so appreciate this, and we need to show up Florence Copper. I'm putting a challenge right now. Their costumes are unbelievable every year, so let's kind of, Council, let's get together.
I'm sorry. Yes, yes. The only thing is, or another thing, is if you don't want to participate and you want to come and watch the parade, they parade out our front door on Park Street, around Virginia, down to Orlando, go through the trunk or tree, and then back across the street to the school. So it's kind of fun to watch the little people and now the big people.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And Lisa's got these flyers, if she would, please make sure that the fire department, the police department, rec, whatever.
Absolutely.
Has gotten, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your evening. Is there anyone else? This is the only one I had signed up was Ms. Rankin. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in house tonight or online? Okay, we're not seeing any, so, like I say every time, if you've missed your opportunity, have no fear, we got another one at the end. You can join us at the end for the call to the public. This time, I'm gonna close our call to the public. Item 6A is a public hearing. Public hearing to receive comments regarding proposed Skyview Farms annexation, annexation number 2025-01, of approximately 200 acres of land, which is generally located at the northeast corner of East Heritage Road and the Yeager Road alignment, assessor number as presented. Ms. Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, tonight, we have a public hearing for an annexation petition, annexation number 2025-01. This is for a site that is 200 acres. In this visual, you can see it hatched out here.
So, Marcella, just real quick, just so you know why we're looking behind us, our screens are not working tonight, so this is kind of the only way that we can see it. So unless we have it on our, on a different laptop, which I do, but...
Okay.
So anyway, so if, don't be distracted by us looking around.
Okay. So this site is approximately 200 acres. It has a single owner and an authoris, owner authorization form has been signed and submitted. The Town of Florence currently shares two boundaries with this parcel that's over 200 feet in length, and it is not a county island, so we are meeting the Arizona State statutes in those two areas. It is currently zoned in Penal County as general rural, or GR, and when, or if approved and annexed into the Town of Florence, it would transition into the closest zoning that we have, which is single-family ranchette, R1R, if annexed. And then from there, the applicant would work to bring that into the Skyview PUD, which is already existing, and they do that through an amendment. So the owner and developers, as I said, plan to bring that to Skyview Farms. That's already a community, that's there. It's been there since 2006. It hasn't been developed, but there are plans and works to develop it in the future. So some next step, Lord. So blank annexation petition and a map, those have been submitted to the Penal County Recorder's Office on August 20th. Currently, we are within the 30-day waiting period, as required by the state, and once that 30-day waiting period ends, then we can commence with bringing this back, this item back for an official ordinance. As per notice, there was an ad that was placed on the August 28th and September 4th, Penal Central Dispatch paper, and three signs were posted on the property in places where public could see them, and a notice by mail was sent to the owners of both in real personal property. Also, a letter of notice was sent to the chairman of the County Board of Supervisors for Penal County. All these notices were, well, not all of them, but the chairman one and then the person, the other notice by mail were all sent six days before the hearing. And that is the end of this presentation.
Okay. At that time, right now, I'm going to then open the public hearing and ask if anyone is in the audience that would like to speak to this matter, please raise your hand, come to the podium. Is there, or anyone online? Okay, not seeing any here. Is there anyone online? Okay. Not seeing anyone online or in house that'd like to speak to this matter. I'm now going to close the public hearing. So I'm gonna open it up for comments or questions from council. Does any council members have any questions for the applicant or comments?
I had questions, but I talked to the Director of Community Development, AJ, this week and got my information.
All right. Perfect. All right. Well, with that, then, at this time, this is a public hearing to receive the comments. I'm now going to close the public hearing and move on. Item 6B, fun stuff. Recognition of our Fire Marshal Jennifer Pill Davis being selected by the Arizona Fire and Burn Educators Association as Arizona's Fire and Safety Life Educator of the Year. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Eaton, Vice Mayor Adam, members of the council. I'm proud to be standing in front of you tonight to recognize one of our town employees. Our Fire Marshal Jennifer Pill Davis has been recognized by the Arizona Fire and Life Safety as Educator of the Year. She was awarded this at their educator ceremony here in the past couple of weeks. She's been working here in Florence to rally the fire troops, to work on community risk reduction programs. She heads up our annual open house, and if you'll remember last year, the burn trailer where she presented a live burn scenario, she not only brought that to the Town of Florence, but she also brought that to multiple other communities, smaller communities in the area. So we wanted to recognize her this evening, hopefully get a picture of you guys with, with her and her award, and to say thank you to Jennifer for the work that she's doing for us.
All right. Very good. Well, I happened to be present during this award presentation, so I still am relatively active in the fire community and was extremely happy to see that and see not only Florence be represented, and this is done at the State Fire School, so over 800 firefighters from around the state were in attendance to this opening ceremonies. It's a big deal. It's a very big deal, and we are so proud to be a part of that, and so proud of you to be a part of that. So would you like to say anything, or? There you go. All right. It seems pretty easy, but we just had, but once again, we'll get a picture, but once again, thank you so much for what you do, for our community and for our town.
Thank you.
All right. We're laughing, because it feels like we're coming out like the Emmy Awards or something. We come through that curtain, it's just a little, it's a little odd. So anyway, thank you once again. So item 6C is an announcement of training opportunity, "Over My Dead Body: Turning Conflict into Collaboration," between being held on October 6th and October 20th of 2025. Ms. Garcia.
Council has truly been my partner in being able to put together this training class, because it was you who brought back the materials that we'll be using for the class when you attended your league session. So we're excited to now announce that October 6th and October 20th, we'll be hosting "Over My Dead Body: Turning Conflicts into Collaboration." It's gonna be a fun two-day session. We encourage everyone to come in, sign up. We'll be getting out the materials tomorrow, if council supports this, so that we can get out those books and start this. Each participant will be required to read the book that goes with the training sessions. We have online electronic versions available, as well as book versions, and then we'll be working through the workbook and we'll be turning conflict into great collaboration. So we look forward to people attending, as well as as many council members who would like to attend, we'd love to have you. So hoping that you're as excited as we are for this training session. Thank you.
And we are, and I think it's perfect timing for this. It just goes along with where we need to be. Does council have any questions or comments?
But who is the audience for this? Is it just council, or is it?
We are opening this wide open, so we are inviting both our current boards and commissions. We are inviting our alumni from our Florence Leadership Academy. We're inviting our town staff, and we're inviting all citizens. As long as I have a book I'm, for everyone, I'm willing to pack the house and provide as much training as possible.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Lisa. We'll look forward to seeing that opportunity advertised.
I do want to say that congratulations to Mr. AJ Monroe, who's gonna be doing his first training session with me, and I'm super excited to have the partnership.
Wow. Congratulations, AJ. Yeah.
Can AJ read the book for me?
I, I heard the bus, I heard the bus backing up from up here, so I guess we've got our first test on conflict, so resolution right there.
Anyone else who wants to do training with me, sign up. I love to train.
We absolutely will. So thank, thank you guys so much for that. So item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member objects at the time the agenda item is called. So ladies and gentlemen, we have consent agenda items A through H. Is there anyone that wants to pull anything off for further discussion? Okay, not seeing any. I will entertain a motion to accept items, consent agenda items A through H.
I'll make a motion, we accept consent agenda items A through H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh my gosh, thank you, Sherry. Forgot you were back there. I couldn't see you on our thing here, so thank you. Item eight is our new business. It is item 8A, update on the facility signage for the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds for comment and feedback only. Good evening, Jeff.
Mayor, would you like to come sit down here to watch the presentation and then go back up for discussion? Would that be easier, since you do not have your screens?
No, I think we're good. We've, we've got our laptops up here, and I think we can view everything on the laptops.
Okay, very good.
And we've, and we have also had this since Thursday, so we, we are aware of it, so. Thank you, though.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'll be sharing proposed facility signage for the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds for council discussion and feedback on this artwork. Let's see here. There we go. All right, so first off, starting with some background and how we got here. In February this year, the Rodeo Ground Advisory Board reviewed draft signage designs and requested revisions. Those revisions were sent to our vendor, signage vendor at the time, which was Floresco. In July, however, Floresco announced that they would be ceasing all operations in Arizona. And so subsequently, staff had to reestablish design documents for all of our active sign projects and identify a new vendor. We identified Summit West Signs through a cooperative purchase agreement and began working with them to draft new designs for our active projects, including this one. While a brighter, excuse me, broader signage agreement that covers all of town needs will be coming forward at a later date, this rodeo grounds package is moving ahead now, so we can try to meet an installation timeline for the event this November. On September 4th, the Rodeo Grounds Board unanimously approved these designs, and tonight, we're asking for council's feedback on the artwork, so Summit can begin fabrication and installation activities. With that background, I can now get into some of the individual signs that we are looking at installing. So first off, we have a primary entrance sign. This would be a large, double-sided, double-sided aluminum sign that measures 11 feet by four feet in terms of the actual face of the sign. The current plan is to locate the signage outside of the facility fence, orientate, oriented perpendicular to the roadway to maximize visibility from both directions. The design includes both the town logo mark for consistency at our other facility signs, such as the town hall sign, as well as the Vinny Jones sign, and also includes the rodeo logo to highlight the unique facility. In addition to this sign, we have a, two vertical aluminum entryway pole signs. These would be one foot by eight foot in terms of the text area and would be mounted to existing light poles to clearly mark the entrance for facility visitors. In addition to this entryway signage, we are planning to install half-mile wayfinding signage based on council feedback. This signage would include two reflective aluminum signs, eight foot by four foot, placed a half mile north and south of the facility entrance. Because the northern sign would resign on ADOT property, both signs were designed per ADOT standard, so they are, have a consistent look. And these signs are especially important for visitors who may not have visited the facility previously, or those with heavy loads hauling animals or equipment. And so we want to make sure we include these in the package. Finally, we have a detached exit sign that would be located inside of the property. This is a single-sided sign, five foot by three foot, intended to give clear direction for those leaving the facility grounds. And with similar design elements to our facility signs and entryway signs for this facility. So with that, the estimated cost for this sign package would total just over $32,000, plus town permits fees and fees. In this fiscal year's budget, council approved $86,000 for recreation facility signage. Of that total, $41,000 was reserved for this project, so in terms of our current estimate, we would be well within our budget. And by working with Summit West through their cooperative purchase contract, we will be streamlining procurement and hoping to ensure a consistent unified look for all of our future sign projects by working with this vendor. And that approach would also help minimize duplication of efforts and reduce travel costs for installation services. So with that, again, we are seeking council feedback on this artwork, and with that feedback, we are hoping to allow Summit West Signs to begin their permitting and fabrication work, again, giving us the best opportunity to get these signs in before the event this year. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Jeff, I've got just a couple of questions. So this was worked on with the commission, with the rodeo group, with their input sizes and that kind of thing, and what's on here.
That's correct.
And so they've, they've agreed with, with a lot of this. And then as far as signage permitting and stuff, ADOT, we're all good with being able to get permit signs or sign permits that we can put out there?
Absolutely. We work with Summit West on that, yes.
Okay. So that's, because I don't know if that takes a while to get done. So overall, I think, so, and we were kind of discussing this a little bit earlier, I actually worked here during the branding portion of what we went through, which was horrible. It was a, it was a horrible process. It was your first week, two weeks, month, whatever it was, here, I was actually working here and trying to get the branding, and, and we've started that branding around town. So I, I believe this, and I, and I'll open it up to other council members, I believe this to be an extremely attractive sign. I am one that believes in first impressions by anybody new, whether they live here, whether they're coming in to bring their kids in to rodeo. First impressions are important in selling our town and keeping our town. Overall, I, I think it is an extremely attractive sign, and, and I would approve with that with, if there is any other, you know, changes to verbiage or anything like that. So at that, now I'll just open it up to council members. Come on, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Jeff, finally. I mean, this has been a long time coming. We've been waiting for signage. It's so critical, especially out there, it's kind of desolate, there's nothing there. So this is terrific, and I agree with the mayor, very professional looking. I would like to plant an idea in everyone's head. As we go forward now, and we start to hear the word heritage tourism, we start to try and attract people to Florence for a tourism purpose, I would like to consider how we do our signs, not radically different, but you're talking about a different purpose and a different audience, and so rather than have the consistency that we have downtown in all of our official town buildings, which is perfect. I walk by the police station sign every day. I think it's very clear, it's very professional, and I really like the design. That's an official town building. Tourism is different, right? You want to exude some sort of fun and excitement, and wouldn't you like to stop here? And one of the things that I would really like to see whenever we talk about the rodeo grounds is a mer- Overall, I, I think it is an extremely attractive sign. And, and I would approve with that with, if there is any other, you know, changes to verbiage or anything like that. So at that, now I'll just open it up to council members. Come on, it's Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Jeff, finally. I mean, this has been a long time coming, we've been waiting for signage, it's so critical, especially out there, it's kind of desolate, there's nothing there, so, this is terrific, and I agree with the mayor, very professional looking. I would like to plant an idea in everyone's head, as we go forward now and we start to hear the word heritage tourism, we start to try and attract people to Florence for a tourism purpose. I would like to consider how we do our signs, not radically different, but you're talking about a different purpose and a different audience. And so rather than have the consistency that we have downtown in all of our official town buildings, which is perfect. I walk by the police station sign every day, I think it's very clear, it's very professional, and I really like the design. That's an official town building. Tourism is different, right? You want to exude some sort of fun and excitement, and wouldn't you like to stop here? And one of the things that I would really like to see whenever we talk about the rodeo grounds is America's oldest youth rodeo. Right? We own that, claim to fame, we're the only ones that have that. So I think it's really important, and I'm sure people would take issue with me. I did not know what parada meant when I came here, I don't know if that's a very well-known term, and that's why I like the idea of youth rodeo, but I will certainly give on that. I also think that it's important for the rodeos that we're trying to attract to this town that that rodeo logo get a little more prominence. My suggestion would be to have it up top with the Town of Florence, it's co-sponsored, but I would like to see that logo getting a little more prominent. So again, the types of rodeos we're trying to attract to this town are nationally acclaimed, and we want that logo recognition. I think that if we could just kind of reswizzle this a little bit, so that, as I said, America's youth rodeo is what would grab you. Because, you know, this is not just for the people looking for a specific night of rodeo. This is every single day, the traffic that comes up and down the 79, there are weekly barrel races, there are all kinds of rodeo events. And we want somebody driving by not even thinking of rodeo to think, oh my gosh, I gotta check that out, and I'll tell you why. At the museum, we have everybody sign a guest register. Almost 40% of the people coming up from the 79, from the south, say they found the museum just by driving by. Can you imagine if we had a sign out on the road? Signage is so important, and they do read that, so, that would be my, my input. And then secondly, I have a question, have we sent the bid to ACI?
So at this time, we are planning, my plan was to work with Summit West signs so that they could execute and design all of our signage, to ensure that we are moving forward with a consistent look, consistent materials, things of that nature. So at this point, we're planning to move forward under cooperative pricing with Summit West signs, that's the current plan.
Able to do all of our signs?
EMCs, they are not, in particular. That was one question I did ask them, if they're able to do electronic signs. So that was another reason I wanted to work with Summit West, because they could execute all of our sign projects.
That makes sense, but I would still like for a bid to go to ACI, because I think this seems kind of high. And since we'll be doing more signage, I mean, to me, I'd like to get the price we can, assuming they can meet our date, of course.
Correct, so Mayor Vice Mayor, that was something I was going to add, if we, so this, if we take it under cooperative, this could be approved per the manager's authority, and we would not need to bid this project necessarily, therefore we could execute it more quickly if we went forward with the bid process. We would likely miss the install for this year's event.
That can't happen.
Well, and then I, and I think honestly, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that it's done right. I mean, I think we're, we've been this long with not having this sign out there, and so, you know, to, just to rush and to get, just to get a sign out there for this year's event, I, I don't know that that's, I would rather it be correct and, and take the time and make sure that we're doing that. If they can meet it, and I think the biggest thing too for me is making sure that they can meet and, and make it look like our, our brand, and they can do our brand, so anyway, that was just one comment on the Vice Mayor, so. Councilmember Ben Sina.
I have a couple, I'm personally not for this sign at all, I think it's a waste of money. But ACI could build the electronic sign cage, is that the rocks go in? And we could contract for somebody else to put the electronic sign on top of it. Yeah, they don't do electronic signs, but I have seen their similar cage with the rocks in it done in Gila Bend and other places. I've saw photos that they've sent. So I, I agree, we should try to use ACI, they have artists over there and so on, but it's a pretty sign. I just think it's a waste of $32,000. I like the wayfind signs, because I've had people when I'm out there, said it'd be nice to know it's coming up so we can slow down with our horses or trailers. But anyway, I would prefer that we try ACI and, especially since they're here in town, and use them on, on sign projects, because they have, they have artists, they have machinery, they can do a lot of things.
Okay, Councilmember Bucelato.
I also had on my paper, ACI question mark. The good thing about ACI, I mean, it may take a little bit longer to create what you're looking for, but the good thing about ACI is any money that the inmates make in, in creating this, if they owe any restitution to victims, then, you know, that goes into that pot to, to pay the restitution back. So keeping them employed is very important. It also teaches them skills, so when they leave ADCRR, you know, hopefully they won't come back from, from what they've learned out there. So I feel like as a community that is prominent with seven different prisons in it, that this is definitely an avenue to look at. Not saying to select this one, but I think it's definitely an avenue to look at. Because ACI has created, I mean, they redid our boat seats, they've powder coated a set of our rims, they've really created some beautiful things out there. And I think if you tour it and, and check it out, you're going to be pretty surprised at what they've created. I mean, they've even created the countertop set, the barbecue company here in town. The tables in the lobby at PCSO, so they've got a lot of things underneath their belts. So I definitely agree with looking into them, and I'm sure it would come in a lot less than 36,000, 32,000.
All right, thank you.
Keith, can I just say one more thing, I'm sorry? I did want to add that, of course, I spoke with Bill Foster. So yes, they did approve it, went through the commission, they did approve the verbiage, but they're not thinking marketing either, right? So once I ran this by him, he's all on board, I would suggest we, whatever we decide, we take it back to the rodeo commission and give them another shot, but I did speak with Bill.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Maldonado.
So I agree with a lot of my council members up here, you know, staying local, I like staying local. And, you know, it, it just makes sense to me, if, if it's possible. The other thing is, if we're able to save cost, I guess I'd have to talk to Public Works Director to see if, um, our guys, if we, if ACI were, were, couldn't like fulfill this, this need, and we did go with these guys, because it's not separated on here, like how much we'd just install, like if we just got the signs from them, and then if it's capable for our guys to install it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Neil.
We'll be in liaison to the rodeo grounds when we got the designs that had taken so long. It was just very exciting to see them and hoping to get them in the ground. And everybody's honest opinion in the meeting was get it before Junior Parada, which it would be great, but I can understand going a different route. One thing I will caution though, using the inmates, is that if we do use them, we make sure to check it early, because there's been a whole lot of work that's been done by the inmates where they put a little message in there, and it should be combed over very finely. If you know anything about law enforcement and you know what to look for, comb over it very well. They put hidden messages, the sheriff's department has tables right now with pig faces on it that nobody's seen for years, because they'd like to hide little messages in all their work they do. But the signage is, is something y'all don't know, I, when I first got on council, I had asked for signage, because if you're ever driving out there at night and happen to be behind a great big old truck pulling about seven or eight horses, and they gotta lock it up because they can't see where they're going, it is extremely scary and some of them animals get hurt, so. I've been hollering about this signage since I got on council my first year. So I'm just very excited to see it, and I really respect what everybody is saying, like I'm saying, we just, when we got it, we were excited and we want to get it before Junior Parada. But there are great, great ideas, and I think taking it back and taking one more look at it. So I would also like to get with Mr. Foster and call a meeting for our rodeo grounds as soon as possible. So maybe we can still get it before Junior Parada.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Neil, and of course, Councilmember Neil sits on that commission as well, so, doing that and giving us that guidance, so, is there any other comments? Sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I do want to know, Jeff, when this project came forward and Floresco was being transferred, transferred to another company to go and make these signs, Jeff did ask, should we go and get another vendor? You all know that this was a project that council had asked for, it has been hanging out there for quite some time. So I informed, I told Jeff to go and move forward with the current vendor, we already had our dimensions and dynamics and all that stuff, just so that we could go ahead and make sure that this thing got finished and across the finish line. So we do know that we have other options to look at out there, and we will go ahead and pursue those other options. But on this one, this one's on me, I told him to go and get it done and get it done quickly, because we wanted to make sure that these signs got up and posted down at the rodeo grounds with Junior Parada.
Thank you, sir, so as, as far as moving forward then, I think you guys have some, some guidance and kind of to rush through and take a look at it and see what that guidance is and kind of get back to us really quick. I don't know, yeah, I don't know that this can be, has to be that big of a process to get back and, I don't know, whatever you guys think, so, anyway, we'll look forward to hearing back from you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate your work on this and continued work on our signage. Item nine is our town manager's report, Town Manager Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, once again, good evening. I wanted to go and introduce to you one of the newest members of our team, and that's J. Rod Tealy. He comes to us from Chandler and has a great report out of Lake Havasu, Arizona, where he comes to us as a project manager. So J. Rod, come on forward and tell council about yourself.
Good evening, sir, and welcome. I know we've had many conversations in the hallway and back and forth and seeing you, so.
I've had a couple of you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, it's great to be here. As Bruce said, my name's Jared Tealy, nickname for my professional career has been J. Rod. It prevents mispronunciation, misspelling. As he mentioned, I was most recently in Lake Havasu City, did a couple really cool projects there. I spent what I call it a majority of my adulting life in Northern California. I was about two hours north of San Francisco with the City of Bukayo, another public agency there for about 15 years. Started my career in purchasing and finance, and then transitioned to Public Works and Water Resources over that time. Have very broad experience, project management wise, finance, regulations, name it, I've probably pretty much seen it. So I'm very happy to be in Florence, I relocated to the Phoenix area last year. Had been looking for the right opportunity and the right place with the right people, I'm very, very happy to be here. Everybody's been very welcoming, I'm on my fourth week now, it's a great team. Everybody's, like I said, very helpful, it's a great team environment, and I feel right at home. So, thank you, and I look forward to being here for many years to come.
Thank you very much, and, and once again, welcome, so any questions or anything from council? All right.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, and welcome, so actually, Bruce, could you give us a little bit of, of job description as far as what he's handling for us?
I can, so if you recall, council came to us a little while back and wanted to make sure that we started finishing projects from the beginning to the middle to the end. So that's what J., I call him J. Rod, he likes to be called J. Rod, that's what he's here for. So he's going to be taking on some of those big projects, making sure that our contractors abide by the contracts that our legal department has put in place, and that's from A to Z. So no more of getting to the end of the project, knowing that the middle has not been completely finished.
Okay, promise?
We're going to go and do it best, I can go and tell you, a lot of the department heads who have already worked with J. Rod are saying what a wonderful addition he is to the team, and just the information that he's brought forward at this particular point has been phenomenal. I'd also like to go and introduce, I don't know if I got an opportunity to go and introduce another member of our team, and she has been doing a wonderful job, that right-hand turn lane that you all see up there at 79 and Hunt. She was a major contributor to that, and we've also had a lot of work that this person has accomplished around town. And I don't know if I've got an opportunity to go ahead and give council a formal introduction, but I'd like for Lindsay Randall to go ahead and come up front and tell us a little bit about herself. J. Rod, you got a silent applause, so I don't want you to think that. Lindsay Rand.
We haven't seen what he's accomplished yet, we've seen hers.
Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I am Lindsay Randall. I am in Public Works now with Andy. I am, my designation is Senior Civil Engineer, but as Town Manager Walls noted, I get to take on quite a few different projects and situations that come up throughout town with an R-ITW and with development is what I get to be over right now. I came from Pinau County, that's where I spent most of my time of my career. See what else, I have lots of children that attend Florence schools, so we're heavily involved in Florence. This is where we are, we love it, I'm excited to be part of the team, thank you.
All right, thank you, Lindsay, very much. We, first, first time meeting you, but we see your name on a lot of things, and we appreciate, we appreciate that specifically in our transportation needs areas, so, welcome, welcome both of you guys, we really appreciate you. And it's nice to, us to take somebody from the county, instead of, this is, I, this just kind of struck a really good, good thing in me here.
So most twice now.
Thank, thank you very much, guys. All right, this is item number 10, is our second call to the public, as promised. Is there anyone online or in-house that would like to speak at our second call to the public? All right, not seeing anyone for that, I'm now going to close our second call to the public. And I am going to, item number 11 is call to council. So Councilmember Bedford.
Good evening, everyone. I just have one thing to say, I went to the grandparent carnival and it was really nice. I enjoyed myself. And I enjoy also representative black men. So that's it, y'all, I don't want to talk.
All right, thank you, get well, please, we miss you down here, so, very good, thank you. Councilmember Ben Sina.
Yeah, we got, yesterday I got to spend the day with Representative Blackman, you know, he lives up in Snowplake, and he represents the north side of the Gila River. First off, we took him to a tour, the mayor and I, Sophie Dessart gave him a tour of Florence copper, and I haven't been out there in a year, Keith said he's not been out there in four or five. And it's amazing what's been done out there in getting ready to start bringing copper up out of that ground. So if you've not made a tour out there, it's pretty amazing to go see it now. It was interesting, he got some great briefings by our, our staff, our directors. It was amazing to hear, he wants to come back quarterly, so I'm going to hold him to that. And hopefully one day he'll bring us a check like Representative Lopez and Martinez did. Today, I know the mayor and I got to attend a East Valley Partnership luncheon in Mesa. It was great to, to be part of that, hopefully we might join that partnership. We got to hear Dan Costa today be the speaker, it was interesting hearing him talk about him getting into the news business and dealing with Trump and some others, was really interesting. So anyway, that's all I have, and I appreciate all the events that have gone on in the town. And anyway, hope everybody has a great week.
All right, thank you, sir, Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. I was fortunate enough last week to attend a Zoom webinar called State and Local Officials Webinar, Civil Military Relations and the Role of the National Guard. And some of the things they went over with, with all the stuff that's happening in our country right now and National Guard being used in different roles that traditionally weren't, aren't, weren't being used in past, in the past. So basically in a nutshell, what they were trying to say was, we as town officials want to make sure that we're working together with the state and the local level and finding out what the needs are. And I think some of our needs are filled because we have the, um, the, uh, our fire depo, what's our thing called there? our fire, what's our thing called? Our folks that do, what do you call it? Not fight fires, the ones that help out with the green, the cert, cert, sorry. The cert team, we have the cert team, sorry. So we have the cert team that does do a lot of these things in times of support and, and don't have to basically be weaponized. So we, we do, we do have that part for our town. The other thing is that they, they, they want to make sure that our National Guard has the, the training so, for whatever they're called to do. You know, whether it be from our governor or whether it be from, from the president. So these are some of the things. And I know we've already been working together with the National Guard to identify some of those needs locally, and then, like I said, in the state. So that's just some of the stuff that, that they went through, and it just happened to be on the same day that we heard about the news about Charlie Kirk. So it was very unfortunate that happened on the same day. But yeah, so more to come on that. And I think one of the senators, he even asked on it, Senator Kevin Payne out of LD-27, he, he asked to see if the, if the guard could be used for, for, to become COs, as temporary COs at the prisons. So I don't, I don't know if that's something that we're going to see, if they're at a really low or, or short, short man at the, at the prisons. So I don't know what, what's going to become of that. So hopefully, we'll hear more about, about some of this stuff and where, where it's going in the future. So thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Bucialato.
I don't have much to say. Just a reminder that on September 20th at the Elks Lodge at 5:00 PM is the Rodeo Grounds Historic Florence Foundation fundraiser. Even if you could just stop by and bid on a, on a raffle item or silent auction, they do have some pretty neat guns that they're auctioning off. So if you could just go support for the kids and Mo, they, that's already kind of happened in our area. We've, we've had National Guard in an agency before helping out when they were short. So that is definitely something that can happen again, probably if needed, because it's, it's happened within the last year. So with that, I'm going to make it a short night, because we have e-session. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Neil.
Only have that the, my beloved Gophers took on the Thatcher Eagles. By the way, kicked me out of the playoffs my senior year, so I really don't like them. And they came up just short. Bad, but they played their hearts out. They, they really gave it all. It came down to the wire. They actually came back from about twenty points down. So go Gophers.
All right, we'll get them, we'll get them. All right, Vice Mayor.
So we have another chance on the 26 snakes, so home game. Everybody show up and support our team. It's been a really busy couple of weeks. A couple of things I wanted to say was last week on the 10th, a big shout out to our chamber. They have been going great guns. Not Paul in particular, it was the Women in Business night, and we had that at the Green Tree. And I've been lucky enough over the past two weeks to spend time with Senator Rogers, with Representative Martinez, and yesterday, Representative Blackman. And I'm going to tell you, I, I'm very impressed. These people are very serious. I think they all listened to us and took notes, and they know who we are. And, you know, we've opened the door now, and we, we figured out the formula, right? When we have support from our staff, thank you very much, our directors, who back us up, because they're looking for shovel-ready projects. They want to know in some detail what it is we want to do with the money. And with your help, I think we have a lot of credibility. And because council members just blabbing about we need money for transportation isn't enough, right? But if you can get down to a detail, a road, what you're going to do with the money, I think we have a good shot of getting it. And I was just so impressed with all these folks for taking the time with us. Then on the next night, we had a Chamber Mixer, and Mo was there. And I'm going to tell you, the chamber is taking off. It was at Michael Bacca's. I couldn't even get in. There were so many people there, and most of the people there, Mo, I didn't know, right? So we're attracting a lot of folks from outside of Florence businesses. And the same thing at Women in Business. Most of the women, they're entrepreneurs, and I did not know most of them, which I think is a good sign. I wanted to just show everybody this. Anna Brown has been working really hard for our newly launched farmer's market. This Saturday, everybody come out and support her, and the first hundred people get this for free. After that, you have to pay for it. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. So I just had a couple of things to add. As usual, everybody kind of gets it before I get it, so at least we, we know about it. So a couple of things. So last week, I was able to join our library team for proclamation, had some snacks and some water and, and just looking at some of their areas. So we're getting ready to go through some, some work on there, some upgrading and updating. But they have been doing so much, and, and our makers area, the makers room, is amazing. And so we have the technology in there, the new technology that I had no idea that we had, and so thank, thank you for showing us, is, is that you could convert your VHS tapes to jump drive or to CDs. They have all the equipment to do that. We did that, and it costs, it's very costly to do that, sending it off to someone. So we have it, and, and it's, and as usual, the team is just so awesome, and they're working so hard right now, so thank you for that. The, tomorrow is Coffee with Keith at the Senior Center. Again, three dollars for one biscuit and gravy, and five dollars for two. It's amazing. Come down there, I'm usually, I'm there about seven, seven to nine. Come down here, you get three minutes. There, you get two hours if you want to. So anyway, so we'll be down there. The Vice Mayor will be out and about at?
I think I'm at the Station Coffee.
At the Station Coffee. The, the Vice Mayor will be there at the same time. Also, then Saturday, we've got a lot of stuff going on. Councilmember Bucialato mentioned the Junior Parata, but we've got the 10th anniversary for the library and community center. So come out one to three, one to three. Okay, come out one to three and visit that. Lots of stuff going on down there, so please come and, and help us celebrate 10 years of that. So other than that, that is all I have right now. We'll move right into item number 12, is our adjourn to executive session. Tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.